Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Finance and Operations Committee. Is that the proper name?
I think so.
Finance and Operations Committee to order. It is March 18th, about 4:32 PM Eastern Standard Time. We're here in Nashua North Boardroom and Ms. Chairman Lamphier has asked me to run the meeting because she's a little under the weather. So, big shoes to fill. I won't fill them. We have a few proposals today and before we get into that, I wanted everyone to know, and I'll just ask a question. We have some financial proposals with big price tags, and I wanted to know if any of these items could be cut or not approved to reduce the impact of the proposed or possible personnel cuts.
Sure. I'd be happy to answer that.
Thank you, Ms. DeGray.
Do you guys have to do roll call first?
I do. Like I said.
Is it okay to answer it prior to?
Today, all right. Ms. Lamphier, are you here?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Here.
And I am here as well. We also have CFO Ms. DeGray. We have Director of Plant Operations, correct, Mr. Smith? And we have the Director of Title I, Ms. Fulton? And Mr., you're last on my list, nothing personal, the Director of Information Technology. So, thank you all for being here. And so, if you could just let people know that...
Absolutely. So, to address your question, so we'll go through the budgeted items or the proposals that are on the table. These will not go ahead and save jobs for next year. At this point, the operating budget, year over year, it's not, it's not like a savings account. If you have money left over at the end of the fiscal year, that rolls over for the most part. We'll talk about some Title Grant funding. We'll talk about some projects related to plant operations. But I would not go ahead and consider these current purchases, funds that you could actually save for next year to save some of the potential positions or cuts that we have discussed.
Questions?
So, but we're still under the impression that no decisions have been made?
From Saturday's meeting, that is correct. My understanding from the mayor's office, it is still a 3% budget as we move forward for fiscal year '26.
Did we decide to ask for more?
I think at this point, over this week and next week, we are waiting to hear from the public and hear from the Board of Education to understand what we are proposing as we move forward.
Right. Just to follow, from your office, since you've already got the numbers all put together, are we, could we ask for more?
Of course. I personally think, of course, you could always ask for more, right? I think it's ultimately a decision based off of Dr. Andreid and the superintendent and then you folks as the Board of Education of, you know, there's guidelines and parameters that came out at 3%. And what are we willing to go in at and ask for? You know, we've been doing a lot of work just in the past 48 hours after the meeting on Saturday, fielding some calls related to transportation. We're gathering some answers related to the questions that transpired on Saturday. So, at this time, I'm not sure what we're going to recommend. I still think the next two weeks, again, it's a planning phase.
And I think we have a meeting next Monday, correct?
Yeah.
So, Dr. Andreid will be here and maybe he'll have more information for us then, right? I hope. More good information.
We know it's up to him, you know?
Would you like to, Mr. Rodriguez, would you like to go first?
Sure.
I'm used to turning it over to the superintendent because I don't know what I'm directing here, so.
All right. So, this is more of an FYI to the Finance and Ops Subcommittee because these are Title I funds and they're approved by the state. We purchased these monies from the state. But the dollar amount is why we're bringing this purchase for interactive panels to the district. So, we've solicited three bids from Bloom, IT Insiders, and ProAV. ProAV came out for the best price of $342,686. And we're going to be purchasing 101 panels for Title I-funded schools. So, 20 are going into Amherst, 25 are going to Dr. Crisp, 13 are going to Fairgrounds Elementary, 25 into Ledge, 12 into Mount Pleasant, and, oh, I'm sorry. Yep, never mind. I'm sorry. We're going to go, we're going to rewind back a little bit. So, 20 are going to Amherst, 25 are going into Dr. Crisp, 13 are going to Amherst, 25 are going into Ledge, 8 are going into Mount Pleasant, and 10 are going into Sunset Heights. So, with this part of this bid, it is recommended that we go with ProAV because they have the most comprehensive quote and they include mobile stands and a three-year warranty along with installation. And as part of this Title I purchasing, these have to be in before the end of the school year.
I think it's, just for the public's knowledge and for the Board of Education, I think it's pretty important to just have some more information of how do we go ahead and arrive at these numbers? And, you know, I think it's pretty aware that Title Funds last year and for this, excuse me, for this current year were cut. And we're expecting that probably to be similar, what we're hearing from the Department of Education as we move into fiscal year '26. So, I think just to address, you know, maybe some additional detail on how did we arrive at these numbers? And then, could this money have been utilized somewhere else? So, Sheri Fulton, if you don't mind?
Thank you. So, just for a little bit of background knowledge for you, the Title I grant allocation is usually dispersed in July, the very beginning of July. We knew it was going to be less and it turned out to be $900,000 less. So, we had to make some cuts in what we had funded over the past few years. So, as we look at everything and wanting to make sure that our elementary schools received what they needed, unfortunately, one of the things we did choose to cut was the Title I preschool at about $450,000. So, we went through, and that budget was very tight in July when we put in all of the salaries and the benefits and everything that the schools needed. We also are mandated to provide money for McKinney-Vento Transportation, which last year cost $580,000 just for transporting McKinney-Vento. And then, we also have to put in an allocation for the non-public schools that choose to take funding from us. And at this current time in Title I, we have three non-public schools that are receiving funds from the Title I grant. So, in basically about the end of December, we're given a carryover. And we never know what that carryover will be. And in fact, they were hinting we might not even have much of a carryover this year. So, we waited and found out in end of December, early January, what the carryover was. And we made sure that we added an additional amount of money to the McKinney-Vento Transportation because I hadn't been able to put $580,000 into that fund. So, I put a bit more in. And then, we started looking at what the needs of the schools were. And one of the things each of the schools do for me at the beginning of the summer is they write a needs assessment. In that needs assessment, they go through surveys from their parents and the teachers and staff and children and find out, looking at their data, what best needs they have for their school and how can Title I help them. And one of the things all of the schools wanted was an upgrade on technology to the interactive boards if it was ever possible. At that point, it seemed like a dream, but the money had come through and we took a look at it. I worked with IT and we decided to buy the interactive boards for the schools. The reason that you, the numbers are skewed. You hear that like Amherst Street's getting 20, Dr. Crisp 25, but Mount Pleasant only 8. One of the things we have to do with the Title I grant is make sure that we keep a rank order of their poverty level. So, in our Nashua schools, Dr. Crisp is the highest poverty school. It goes to Mount Pleasant and then Ledge, then Amherst, then Fairgrounds. And Sunset is a targeted assisted school, which means that they only provide help for about 152 students of their staff. So, because of that, I have to be careful of how much each school gets. And some of the schools had another need. For instance, Mount Pleasant asked if their funding could be used to get a social worker for the remainder of the year. And whatever money was left over, could they please have the interactive panels? So, that's why you see they only got 8. The same thing with Fairgrounds. They're getting 10. The reason is Fairgrounds, every single year, does their own homegrown summer school program. And it's expensive. It's wonderful. And the kids love it and they really thrive. So, Mr. Harrington wanted to do it again. So, part of his portion of the carryover went to his summer school program. And then, what was left over, I was able to get him interactive boards. So, that's kind of how I lay it out. Do you have any questions?
Sheri, the only other thing just to add is for awareness related to the federal grants and the title funding, there is what we call a period of performance. So, during that period of performance, these costs have to be incurred during a set timeframe. And then, when we purchase something, we have to receive the stuff and set it up and get it implemented during that period of performance. So, again, it's not like this money could be kind of held into Title I and used for fiscal year '26.
Ms. Lamphier?
I was just wondering if you could explain more about the carryover, how it works, and why we can't predict how much we'll get?
So, the carryover is something that the state looks at from after all the grants close, September 30th, all grants are closed in the state for Title I. And then, they look to see how much wasn't spent in each of the districts. So, for instance, one of the things we battle is most of the schools want personnel. Sometimes, we can't find them to hire. Or they come and they go. So, the money is always, there's always a little bit of money left over, although we do our very best. So, the state compiles that money and then they divide it up amongst the districts. And then, you are allowed to take a portion of that if you want to. And every three years, you can take the full amount.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
So, I guess my question is, this is not providing all of these touchscreen environments for the schools. There's still, there was some that was given by another grant? And then?
Yes, that was Charlotte Charitable Gaming Night. So, that was part of that. So, Charlotte was outfitted with charitable gaming, interactive panels, so to clear view. Same ones that are being, that are being purchased through the Title I grants in this one.
And there's more that need to be purchased on top of this. This one, these are the only ones that are coming out of the Title I?
Correct.
But we're looking to get more?
Correct. Yeah. So, out of our-
There's more on top of this?
Right. So, we have about 175 core, well, all right, I'll say we're 101 here. But out of this 70, so we have, Birch Hill was in Maine Duncible, purchased through JS SBC through that, through that funding source. Charlotte should be fully outfitted with their interactive panel installation. But yes, there will be remaining schools that don't have any interactive panels after this. This is just for the schools that have Title I funding associated with them.
I think just to add, so, you know, that, in my opinion, creates some inequity in our elementary schools right now. The challenge I think we and many other districts are probably faced with is there's only certain amounts of Title Funds that we receive. Part of, and Sheri, please correct me if I'm wrong, but part of the Title Funding is so that those schools that are identified as Title I, it's basically additional funds to go ahead and enhance some of the support that we need within those schools. As we saw on Saturday, and I don't want to derail us to talk about fiscal year '26, but just from awareness standpoint, that is the reason why we as an administration team and the principals at the school had come forward with the IT director's support to say, here's how many touchscreen panels we would recommend as a district to purchase next year in fiscal year '26 to make some equity on these touch panels that are going out. So, as we saw on Saturday, that would be one of the areas we had scenario planned that we would go ahead and possibly remove out of the budget.
Sure, go ahead.
I was just wondering about how Charlotte was able to get hooked up with the charitable gaming. Is that something that the PTO did?
It's something that was set up a couple of years ago. So, you put on a list and then that's, that's when you get granted. So, their night was, I believe, a few months ago. And they raised enough money to outfit 22 interactive panels at Charlotte. So, there is a waiting list. And from what I understand, the remaining schools that aren't, that aren't going to receive panels have put themselves on a list for these, for these type of devices.
And Dr. Andreid has done a ton of research and support because, you know, all the schools are now asking, hey, how can we get involved similar to what Charlotte Ave's PTO did? So, again, to Mr. Rodriguez's point, there is a waiting list. It really depends year over year based off of those charitable gaming facilities if we're able to get on them. So, we have gone ahead and asked that we as a district are on that. But it could be, it could take several years for sure to go ahead and possibly have that opportunity.
Can I, I just want to ask a question while we're on the topic of that. If, for some reason, the funding, Title I funding is withheld, you know, talk of media covered, the Department of Education being dismantled, could we possibly be left holding the bill?
No, this money is coming out of my 2425 grant. So-
If you said it earlier, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
So, there's no risk that we're going to have to pay for this? That's great.
Absolutely none. And that's why we want to get it in the classroom because it's supposed to be used this year.
You did say, and I just wanted to be sure. And then, the other, only other question I had was, the, we, I think we voted or we approved the closure of Title I preschool earlier this year. And there's no way that that can be reconsidered?
It certainly would always be forefront of my mind because I absolutely adored the preschool and feel it's very, very valuable. But like Crystal said, we're worried about, we have no idea what next year's going to bring. We do not know and we've asked the state. They don't have any ideas. So, I don't know if we're going to get the same amount, which wouldn't be enough of what we got this year, or more or less. So, it's a waiting game right now, but that is something that I would love to bring back someday.
It's your call as the director to get the screens and-
I appreciate that faith in you, but-
No, no, don't, don't take it the wrong, I meant, that's, it's a, it's a tough call.
It's a tough call and it's a money issue and I hate it. One of the things I think I feel good about is we were able to find or give parents options of those children who'd already signed up for preschool. We were able to find jobs for all of the four kindergarten teachers as well as the para. But it breaks my heart because it is a great way of prepping our students for kindergarten.
And I really, I really just meant to say the buck stops with you. And for Truman, that was certainly a compliment, so.
Thank you. On a happy note, we are bringing back, because of the carryover, we are going to do the Blast Off to Kindergarten Summer School, which is where we have about 30 children in each of our Title Buildings come in and spend a half a day for four weeks, five days a week, and get to know their school, meet their principal. They have music lessons. They eat breakfast and lunch. So, it's a nice alternative to getting used to school and getting ready for it. We were able to afford that.
Thank you. We do have several items and there is a policy meeting at 6, but-
So, I guess going back to my original question, I'm sorry, I know a lot has gone on before, between there. But so, we are covering seven of the schools with this one. And only one of the schools currently now have them.
Three schools, three schools.
Three schools now have them. And then, we're going to cover...
Five?
There'll be seven, yeah, there'll be, well, six with partial, partial implementation of Sunset Heights, Mount Pleasant, and Fairgrounds Elementary. But that, again, what Ms. Fulton said is it's need-based. You know, they, they ask for different things besides interactive panels.
And like Mr. McLafee had said-
McLafee?
Mr. McLafee-
There probably was a Mick back in the day, but I think at LSU when they deleted it.
Staying on one point.
It's my name.
I apologize for adding a Mick to Catholic.
It's okay. We've only known each other for two years, but I'm a sensitive Irish guy.
So, saying that, I agreed with him when he said that it was great for them, for us to look at doing this for all the schools. But my question is, if this is used to do the end of the year kickoff, if this is used for summer school, there's nothing else other than these tablets that the schools could or would need in a, in a year that we're looking at not knowing what we're getting next year? That's, this is the best, in your mind, this is your best, this is the best thing for these schools if we don't know if we're going to get them next? We're going to have enough to even get the rest of the schools?
I want, I want to jump in before Ms. Fulton jumps back in.
Oh, I'm sorry. Neil said it was her decision, so I just was asking if she thought it was the best. That's where my line of-
I didn't say that. I asked her.
So, I want to be extremely clear that this funding for Title I has to be used in this school year. Has to be used for fiscal school year '24, '25. There is a needs assessment that is done from every single Title School. And based off of the needs assessment that Ms. Fulton and the principals have done, at this point, this is where they'd like to spend their funds. And I mentioned earlier in the conversation, my understanding from your prior COO is grant funding usually does not, excuse me, expenses related to grant funding usually does not come forward to the Board of Education for approval. It is more for awareness. And again, based off of the dollar amount, I wanted you folks to be aware of it. So, I will let Sheri, Ms. Fulton, answer that question. But I am extremely confident based off of the holes that I've already poked to say, is this money being used in the right spots for the children appropriately? And is there anything more we are missing?
And I would just add that the state is extremely careful that if I request anything written in the activities of the Title I grant, that they go back and it's matched in the needs assessment that the principals and their, their parents and their teachers have done each year. So, it's, we couldn't just buy anything. It has to be justified as to why they need it and why we should use it. And also, before we chose this, one of the things we made sure was they had, we inventoried all of their Chromebooks and made sure that that was in place. So, we've been very systematically careful going through that needs assessment and making sure that we're granting what each school has deemed important through their data to buy.
My final question is to Dr. Rodriguez. Will we be able to get them all by this time? I know the last time we talked, we weren't sure if they were all going to be. Just closing up that gap. That's my last question. Thank you.
Could you clarify, like, what exactly, so, like, are we-
I know you had said the last time we talked about these tablets that you weren't sure that we would, what the work order or if we're going to be able to give them, get them because of where they come from and everything. So, I'm just double checking in this meeting that we'll be able to get this many of them-
Okay.
-that we haven't already ordered by the end of the school year as directed?
Yep. So, we have not heard any supply chain issues or anything like that from, from the vendor. So, we have confidence that this is, that we should have them in time and installed promptly upon arrival. So, or upon the delivery. So, I'm, that's, I hold the confidence of what, of what our vendor says because they do all the ordering for us. So, yep.
Okay. No further questions? I'd like to make a motion that we recommend purchase of 101 ClearTouch interactive panels for Title I elementary support from ProAV for an amount not to exceed $344,309. Cost to be divided between the Title I accounts listed in the table. I didn't wear my reading glasses, sorry. All those in favor say aye?
We need a second.
Oh, sorry. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Regan, second. Ms. Lamphier, second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
No? Abstention?
I said aye.
You did? You said aye? Oh, I didn't hear. So, three ayes. You, that's it. The motion passes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Smith, are you going to go or Ms. DeGray? Ms. De-
Well, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Smith to take us through the couple purchases. The first one he is going to talk about is the SURF vehicle purchases. Just one asterisk, if you don't mind, before you get started there. SURF purchases, as a friendly reminder, that comes from a specific account that is housed within the city's overall budget. So, it is not impacting us as an operating budget standpoint. We need approval here to go ahead and move forward with those purchases. So, go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Can I call you O'Claffey?
No.
It's also Irish, I think.
Especially sensitive, you know, given yesterday was a special day for us, you know?
Okay. SURF stands for Capital Equipment Reserve Fund. And it is a, as Crystal indicated, it's a, set up by the city. It's specifically set up each year with, based on the department requests. We put together, we have a very long spreadsheet that lists all our vehicles, when we expect they'll have to be replaced. The city then budgets for those vehicle replacements on cue. In other words, during the fiscal year that they expected to have to be replaced. I would say, in general, I'd say the school department keeps its vehicles longer than anybody else. We believe in getting the last, squeezing the last little bit out of each vehicle. So, you may see some vehicles that look a little rusted at times or a little peaked, but we're just getting the best, most we can of our vehicles. So, tonight, I'm requesting that we buy cargo vans that were budgeted for in FY23 and FY25. These cargo vans are used by the tradesmen. So, it could be electricians, plumbers, HVAC mechanics, whatever. You might ask why FY23, and it's several years later. It's because the supply chain. We just could not get the vendors to quote on them. And then, last summer, early fall, we were prepared to move forward. But the city came to us and said we would much, much, much rather you purchase alternate fuel vehicles, be that natural gas or all-electric or hybrid. So, we, we had to wait again for the vendors to come up with some quotes for this. We did, we're ultimately successful. And the standard gas van costs $65,626. The electric van costs $68,483, so about $3,000 more. They provide us with a charger that we will install with our electricians we have in-house. So, we're replacing a 2003 cargo van. So, you can see it's 22 years old. It's time. And the 2008 is only 17 years old. So, but it's time for that as well. So, I recommend, we, I recommend approval to purchase two electric 2025 Ford Transit Vans to be paid for the city capital equipment reserve funds for a total of $136,966. A copy of the quote for the electric van was in your package.
Questions? You know I'm going to ask. I have to ask. Any other companies make something that fits the bill here, that, an electric van that, I only say that because I'm sure you know that Ford stands for Found on the Road Debt. So, you never heard that one?
Haven't heard that one.
Well, I have heard it and-
An Irish thing, maybe?
Oh, see, you guys are gagging up on me. You know, so, but if this is, you know, I know you did your homework and there's, they've been making electric cars for a while, but-
So, our fleet is 97% Ford.
And good luck.
And we, Public Works Street Department does a lot of our maintenance for us. They also purchase Fords. I think most of the city purchased Fords at this point. Part of the reason is- Part of the reason is Groupon Ford has a state contract. So that's why we get the pricing we did with our due diligence. We did go out to another contractor just to see what they would cost. And their costs were higher than what we got here with the state contract through Groupon.
Do you get a federal tax credit for these the way you would if you were a, it's like 7,500 bucks for cars made in America? I don't know.
I don't think cities get tax credits.
Oh, it's just individuals. That's too bad. Maybe put it in your name and it's a lot of money. All right. I do, I have to make the official motion. So I recommend that we, we recommend purchase of two electric 2025 Ford Transit vans to be paid for with city capital equipment reserve funds for a total of $136,966. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels Williams. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I should note, and I forgot to put it in the, the motion there, but it's from Groupon Ford.
From, so noted. Paving. Do you want to do paving next?
Paving is next. So we had set aside, the Board of Ed set aside funds to pave the North High School. So in your packet again. Well, let me backtrack. So of course DPW does a lot of paving every single year. In the past, we've done it both ways. We've worked with them and we've bid out our own contracts. As you can imagine, the miles of paving that they do, they get much better pricing than we do. So they agreed to fold us into their contract. We get the same pricing. They get unit costs from their contractor. They've already bid it out, so we've already followed that process. And so I asked them, okay, we have about $300,000, maybe 340. What can we do with that at the North High School? You've alw- obviously you've already been to the North High School. You've driven on the roads. You've seen the cracks. You've seen the holes, potholes and whatnot. So, and working with the Assistant Facility Engineer, this is in your package. So it shows everything that we would pave. It's basically the city plans to do from the Broad Street Circle down to South Hegan Street, which is where the little housing area is. And then we would pick it up from there and enter into, continue along the fire lane. At that point, enter into the bus loop and also the parent drop off loop, and then on the road going out. For the most part, they're milling. So in other words, they're, they're chewing up the pavement and then they're going to put fresh pavement down. That's what 300,000 plus will, will buy you. It's, it's gone up a lot. I would like to do the parking lot. You, we all park in a parking lot. That's in sad shape too. So I went to Capital Improvement Committee this past week and I gave them two choices really. Give us 1.7 million and we'll finish the site. This is for FY '26. Or give us another 300,000 and we'll just go on to the next piece. So it's, it's, if it's piece by piece, then it's a five or six year process. If they just give it all at once, we can hopefully get it done. So I'm looking for your permission to expand, not to exceed $340,000, conduct the paving as described in, with the DPW's contractor. Funding will come from the school district's deferred maintenance account.
Questions? All right. We ready to vote? All right. So I, I have a recommendation. Recommendation to approve a, there's a cost, I'm sorry, it says a, recommendation to approve paving not to exceed a figure of $340,000 to conduct the paving as described with DPW's contractor. Funding will be from the school district's deferred maintenance account. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels Williams. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. The a's have it. The i's have it, excuse me.
So next we have the repair of the Amer Street Elementary and the high school roofs. So in your package was a rather large document where they did the assessments. The Board of Ed approved the assessments last fall sometime, maybe late last summer. So they finally came in after the first of the year and looking at the, the budget and what we have left, I'd like to proceed with the repairs for these. If you did look at the, the assessment, towards the end of each school, it had a picture of the roof and a bunch of little dots. So like the red dots where they highly recommend we address them immediately or else we're going to surely incur some leaking through the roofs. Blue dots, the next level, and then the green dots, we're, we're good for a while. So I'm looking to repair all the, not the green dots, but the other dots. And we would then use ARM Consulting to prepare the bid specs and bid it out, just as they did this past summer for Fairgrounds, Ledge, Charlotte, a couple other schools. Their cost to do so is $6,635.20. Again, that's below your threshold, which you usually vote on, but since it's tied to deferred maintenance funds, I thought we should bring it forward to you. In the, my cover letter there, I provide the cost estimates that ARM provided to do these repairs. It was 17 for Amer Street, 37, almost 38 for the North High School and 37.5 for the South High School. Incidentally, to replace the entire roof, which we'll have to do someday. What this does is kick the can down the road for you, us. Hopefully by another three to five years for those roofs. But each roof is going to be over $6 million to replace. Very big number. So this is small money to buy us a good amount of time. As we know, the city can't afford $6 million roofs right now, everything else going on. So the motion would be, move back up here. Approve a contract ARM Consulting to bid out roof repair work at Amer Street Elementary, NHS North, NHS South, and provide construction administration for the same in amount of $6,635.20. Funding will be from the school district's deferred maintenance account.
Questions?
I have a question.
Yeah, sure. Ms. Daniels Williams.
So my question is, okay, so we're fixing these roofs, but aren't we assessing all the buildings?
Yes.
So I, I know we're piece, we, we keep doing a couple roofs, then we do stellos and then we do this, but all those are supposed to be on one thing. So as those buildings change, how does that change for what we're asking or what this city has asked on our behalf?
So when, when we arrive at a facility master plan contractor, they're going to ask for information like this. They're going to ask for all our reports, all the studies we've done for all our buildings. So that this feeds that process. That study is going to take probably about a year to complete. So we'll be getting it hopefully about this time next year. We don't want to go through another winter with these roofs already right on the cusp of leaking. Those red dots indicate leaking is imminent, so we need to do something this summer.
Absolutely. Just wondering how that affects all that. But you say, so it all feeds into the, to the one thing. Not that I haven't read this, so I know, but why did it take a year from last year to even get the RFP out for that?
For the facility master plan?
Yeah.
We, we talked, well, getting your funding was the main thing. So we did not receive the funding until this fall. And then as I had the RFP probably 95% done, I finished it late fall and then we put it out and got the bids. We'll be talking up with that a little bit later.
Just asking questions. I'm hoping that the public has the question too because this same time last year, we talked about that. But I'm glad to hear that maybe later we'll hear some updated news on that. But we've kind of adjusted a lot of the buildings within this year. So thank you for that too.
If, if one company gets the bid for all three of these roof repairs, will they have time to do it over the summer, all three of them?
Pretty sure they will, yes.
Okay.
If we're bidding it out now, then the, they're starting to set up their summer schedule as we speak.
Okay.
So the sooner we get this out, the better.
I just wasn't sure. It'd be more likely to have more than one company that ended up bidding and getting the bids? Or if it was likely to be one?
So when we did the, the elementary schools, I think there were five of them. They started in a fall. I don't think we gave them the go ahead till October or so. So they started right away. They actually still have another school to finish up. So it, it does take time, but, and that's, high schools are big, big roofs. But I suspect it'll be done before the snow flies next year.
If you, if you said this, forgive me. Are they, can we expect them to give us three estimates? Is that a reasonable, is it, is that a minimum?
We always ask for at least three bids. So we've, last time they, and they did, they gave us three bids. If we go back through the records, there were at least three, I think four or five companies actually.
That's part of the agreement.
Expect the same thing's going to happen here.
Okay. Any other? All right. I have a recommendation to approve a contract with ARM Consulting to bid out roof repair work at Amherst Street Elementary, NHS North and NHS South, and provide construction administration for the same in the amount of 6,600, I'm sorry. You were like, 6,600, I was thinking about the roof cost. $6,635.20. Funding will be from the school district's deferred maintenance account. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels Williams. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 The a's have it. Three, nothing.
Can I just clarify something just to make sure? Because I.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I want to be sure that we're all aware. So this is truly the proposal for Mr. Smith to go ahead and bid out the work. It's not to go ahead and fix the roofs.
Correct.
For 6,000.
That's why I, that's why I knew it wasn't, that's why.
I knew you paused for a reason.
I said, no, I just, I forgot my reading glasses and.
That's okay.
You said, how much could we expect out? Six million per roof?
When they're replaced, yes. Yes. Depends. So they always assess it, you know? So underneath you have a membrane, right? Then you have a insulation, then you have a board of some sort. And the insulation, as long as it's nice and dry, they can save that. That reduces the cost. If the water gets underneath there and infiltrates it, it's very mushy and starts to crack, then they have to replace everything. 6,000 is on the high side. So you have replacing everything. Keeping in mind, we're, this is 6 million this year's funds. So you start inflating it, you know, until we finally get the funding, then that number's going to go up.
And hope that the materials aren't imported. Okay. Master plan?
Okay, master plan. Again, we received the funds this past fall and we put out an RFP on the street. The, we received bids from five companies. And that spreadsheet was in your package comparing the bids. I did receive a update from one of the vendors, which is Harriman. I see a copy in the far, the right hand, maybe it has to go Ms. Daniels Williams. Don't think she got a copy. Or somebody didn't get a copy. It's your copy. Okay. So they, so Harriman is reducing their bid amount by $21,000. Just make that note. So again, five bids. I reviewed all the proposals. They're, I would say they're all very thorough, all, all well-written. The pricing was 293,500 for Harriman. That's just the base bid. 295 for La Valley Brenzinger. Harriman's out of Maine and New Hampshire. La Valley is out of New Hampshire. SMMA, 287,000. They're out of Cambridge. Received a proposal from Tampa, Florida for 250,000 and one from Boston, Massachusetts, SAAAM for over a million dollars. So again, I review them carefully. We, we have $325,000. So I think you agree the million dollar proposal is out. So we put that aside. I have real reservations about awarding a contract to do a facility master plan from Florida. Part of this facility master plan is not just assess the buildings, but then go talk to the staff, talk to the Board of Ed, talk to the city officials. They need to be able to understand the culture here. They have to know the politics. They have to know what we're up against. And in my mind, it's tough to do that from, from Florida. I have no doubt, in fact, in their proposal, they talked about doing the assessments of the buildings. So that's basically an engineering assessment with people on, boots on the ground here. And so they'll send the people up here to do that. But there's a lot more to what I'm trying to get for this facility master plan than, than just building assessment. If it was just building assessments, I could do that. Take me some time. They have to pay me a lot of overtime, but. We were looking for a lot more in this, in this effort. So for that reason, I recommend we drop them out of the consideration. So it leaves the other three contractors. We've worked with Harriman quite a bit, as you're aware of. Started in the, probably the mid-teens with actually the Broad Street renovation. We worked with La Valley Brenzinger in the past. They actually were the architect of record for the two high schools and did a, a good job with that. We've worked on, with them for smaller projects since then, but nothing recently. SMMA, we've never worked with. They're out of Massachusetts. Again, they had a nice proposal. And we've already talked about the other two. So my recommendation is we go with Harriman. So the, the 293 base bid, we have to deduct 21,000 from that. That'll bring them down to 272,500. Plus the reimbursables. Again, reimbursables are for making copies, mileage, that sort of thing. They also provided a price for 30,000 to do a projection study, enrollment projection study. So in talking to Mr. Donovan, we did an enrollment projection study a couple of years ago. I wasn't involved in that, but I understand the district did. And then probably five years before that, they did a, Nezdek did a projection study.
Ms. Daniels, was that the, when we brought in the consultant? Is that the one you're referring to?
That is what he's referring to, yes.
Guy from Missouri or?
Somewhere out there, yes.
You were here for that, were you?
I had nothing to do with it, but I was here.
You don't want to, I never thought you did, but that's, that's who you're talking about, right?
I think his last name is Smith though, wasn't it?
I was gonna.
No, no relation.
I was gonna leave that out too, but that didn't, anyway.
He was probably O. Smith or something like that. Mick Smith. So that's my, I would say it's a strong recommendation. I've, I've worked with these, with Harriman very closely. I understand the desire to have different flavors come in from time to time. But this is not a project we want to mess up. I've, I've seen these people in action. They did the facility study for us when we were looking at the whole middle school project. So they assessed at that point Elm Street, Fairgrounds and Penetra. Came up with a plan to renovate Fairgrounds and Penetra and kind of left it to us if we were going to renovate Elm Street or build a new school. At that point, it was cheaper to build a new school. That's the path we went. But they did a, their study for the, it was that thick, the study that they prepared for that. So not sure how thick the study would be for all the schools, but it was, it was very well done. So that's my recommendation is to go with Harriman.
Questions? You know, after all this time, you're thinking how to say Lamphier, Lam?
Phier.
Phier?
Yeah.
P H, see? You think I'm. Ms. Lamphier.
Thank you. So I'm just wondering, because I'm not that good at math, what is the total amount going to be for Harriman now, minus the 21,000?
So it looks to me if we take the, the new base fee of 272,500 and we add in the reimbursables, which is an additional $9,500. If you take the 272,500 plus. If you take the two seventy-two, five hundred plus the ninety-five hundred dollars, I'm seeing it's two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. And again, that would not include the thirty thousand dollars, which is the additional services that was on the base quote. Mr. Smith, do you agree with those numbers?
I agree with that, and again, the total amount set aside by the city was, again, specifically for this project, not to be used for anything else. It was, uh, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, so we have twenty-three thousand dollars in reserve in case we have to do something else. If we decide we wanna fine-tune the enrollment projections or whatever.
So we still need to make the motion for the same amount?
I would.
Three thousand?
For two hundred and eighty-two thousand.
I think I would make the motion to not exceed up to the amount that the city awarded to us.
Three twenty-five?
The three twenty-five.
Um, the motion's right now says three oh three.
So it originally was three hundred and three dollars, but then they went ahead and reduced it, so.
So I just wanna make sure when it comes down to read, I have the right amount written down exactly as it should be in the. And I know you've been talking about that amount, but.
I would go ahead and make the motion as is. That's in front of you, please.
Three oh three.
Three oh three, sure.
Got it. Just wanna make sure.
Second the motion.
I, I didn't make it yet. Do you have any more questions?
I have a, I have a question.
I don't think, I don't think I did. I just wanted to get the wording right, but.
I have another question. So my question is, um, how long will it take? It's like, you said about eight months? Will they be starting it right away, or?
So I'm, I'm hoping that the Board of Ed will approve it next Monday night, and they'll, I'll call them the next morning.
Okay, that sounds good, thank you.
I just had one. Um, could this include, um, closure of any schools? This plan?
I th- think the way we've structured it, we anticipate it happening, is they'll provide all the information to us. They'll give us an assessment of each school. But I, I don't see them making a recommendation to close a school.
They would not, they, okay, and I know you said, they, did they recommend, they didn't recommend closing Elm Street, it was people here just decided it was cheaper, so therefore, let's close it, building it.
That was a fiscal decision.
Fiscal, and so this, we, we would just be using their information to make fiscal, similar fiscal decisions?
Yes.
But they don't make recommendations like that? So no one has to be afraid, right now at least, that we're hiring them to close schools?
Correct.
Yet.
Correct.
Okay, we ready? Are you all ready?
All set.
Okay. Uh, I have a recommendation to to award the contract to Harriman not to exceed the, an amount of three hundred and three thousand dollars. Funding will come. This is, this is a proposal for a facility master plan, just finishing the sentence to Harriman. Funding will come from the approved budget by the alderman. Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels-Williams. Um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the vote is three zero. Grant transfer.
We're all set? Have a good evening.
All right, so the motion that is in front of.
Can I just say real, I'm sorry, if you do drive a Ford, I, no offense, I had a you looked really hurt when I said fountain of the road dead. If you're getting into a Ford now, I know they make the best pickup trucks.
I have, still have a pickup truck, it's parked up north. Purchased a Toyota hybrid. About a month ago.
Nice.
You'll see mine in the lot.
My very first car was a Toyota.
That's, we'll talk later. Like I said, I just didn't want you to leave here hurt.
Travels. Thank you.
And I was almost killed by an F-250, but that's another story.
All right, so I am looking for, um, I am recommending that we go ahead and make a transfer, not to exceed forty-two thousand, three hundred and five dollars from the general fund, school department benefits account. And that money would be moved into the thirty-eight hundred school grant funding account to cover actually some extra benefits that were in the federal grants related to ESER III. So just a friendly reminder, ESER III, as a district, uh, we received forty-six million dollars. So this transfer is truly just to cover benefits that were charged, uh, against the grant that we didn't have enough money for. So, uh, the city is allowing us to move this money out of benefits to go ahead and cover, uh, this cost.
No, are you all done, Mr. Gray?
I am, thank you.
Ms. Daniels-Williams? Oh, I thought I saw you move me. Ms. Lamfier, I have no questions. Um, so, uh, I have a recommendation to transfer up to forty-two thousand, three hundred and five dollars from the one thousand general fund, school department benefit account, ninety-one point one, point nine-nine-two, three-two-two, fifty-two, three-zero-zero into fund thirty-eight hundred, school grants fund for the purpose of funding extra benefits with the federal grant expenses. May I have a second?
A second?
Thank you, Ms. Lamfier. All those in favor say aye? Aye?
Aye.
The ayes have it, three zero.
I think mister, um, I think our new host tonight is having a ball with, uh, being the lead over there.
This is a lot more pleasant than subbing for ninth graders, I will tell you that.
Okay.
Subbing with ninth graders.
Excellent. All right, so the next, uh, topic in front of you folks is a five-year strategic plan development. So the Nashua School District, uh, put forth a RFP, a request for proposal, uh, to assist the district in implementing the process of developing, um, over the next five years from a strategic plan standpoint. Um, this is a request from the administration team, as well as Dr. Andreid, to go ahead and move forward. There were nineteen proposals that we received as a district. They ranged anywhere from the lowest, being the one that's in front of you, for twenty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars, all the way up to a million dollars. So again, there were nineteen that came before us. The district administration team did go ahead and review the proposals. There was kind of a, a wide variety out there. But based off of the proposal and what, um, uh, Dr. Andreid is looking to do and achieve, we are recommending, uh, that we approve Teaching and Learning Alliance, Inc., uh, out of Massachusetts for development, facilities, implementation, and monitoring of a five-year strategic plan, and that would not exceed twenty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. And that would be coming directly out of our contract service line.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
So I have lots of questions about this. So it's the five-year strategic plan, but how similar is it to the one that we had before that closed schools?
So.
What was the, yeah.
Sorry, I interrupted you. Go ahead, Ms. Daniel-Williams, I apologize.
So no, I wanted to know, um, how close it was, and then why, um, I'll, I'll leave it there. I got d- distracted after being.
Can I just, maybe I'm, maybe I'm misunderstanding. Is, is this more for academics and curriculum? It doesn't have to do with building?
That is a hundred percent accurate.
This has to do with delivering instruction.
This is, yep, delivering instruction, development, facilitation, implementation, um, of curriculum. So it is truly a strategic plan related more to the developmental, the developmenting and the implementation, not a strategic plan to look at closing schools.
Ms. Lamfier?
Would this address things that we have changed in the past few years? Like the, um, the heterogeneous classrooms and the push-in and pull-out methods that are using? Or is it more, even more academic-focused than that?
My, and I can get some clarity if you'd like, or we can get some clarity for Monday night's meeting. My understanding of this strategic plan is, and I think strategic plan makes it sound a little bit more than what it truly is, right? So I, I appreciate the questions, and I'm sure there's some hesitation there. Uh, it truly should be, just as the recommendation states, for teaching and learning, for the development, the facilitation, the implementation, really around more of that teaching and learning environment for the next five years. So it's more of like a consultant, uh, organization to develop what a five-year plan would look like for us as a district.
Okay.
Sure.
And I guess I was just wondering if there was more of a description than what is just here for the contract services? 'Cause you just mentioned some stuff I didn't hear, or I can't read here.
So if we go ahead and look at, um, after my, after the header that was supplied by Dr. Andreid, if we look to the next page, there is a contract for service with the Nashua School District. So that outlines more of the proposal, what it truly is for. So it's for professional services. Uh, the description of the services is to develop, facilitate, creation, implementation, and monitoring of a successful five-year strategic plan as proposed by T L A in two phases. So again, it is all based around, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Professional services.
I just heard a po- I'll send you a link to their website. It tells you a lot about what they do.
Right, and that's what I was saying, like, it was a lot more than what was listed here.
I just looked at the name, you know?
Thank you, I did see that there, and then the service, um, venue being T L A at eight hundred, yes, got that.
Any more questions? Okay. I have a motion. Recommendation to approve the contract with Teaching and Learning Alliances, Inc. of Woburn, Mass. For the development, facilitation, implementation, and monitoring of a five-year strategic plan in an amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars from account ninety-one point one, point zero zero, one, two, two, three, two, zero, five, three, six, two, eight. May I have a second?
A second?
Thank you, Ms. Lamfier. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Nay.
Listen, you were telling, the vote is two to one, motion carries. And then the monthly treat, that is, the transfer report. I was trying to remember if Mr. Donovan did a, a couple of months at once, and whether, or whether he always, every month does it.
Every month.
He did, really?
I was gonna say, I, I looked back and I thought it was every month.
Not the fini- no, not the, not the financial report. I jumped ahead to the transfer.
Transfer, we'll go there first, 'cause you went there, and then we'll go back to the financial report. It looked like every single month, any, uh, transfer over a thousand dollars, he did bring forward to the board.
I must've slept through the old.
You blocked it all out?
Sometimes they're interesting. Okay, it's all yours.
Thank you. So the first budget transfer that's in front of you is Penachuck Middle School. Uh, they are just moving some money, uh, directly out of educational, um, excuse me, out of one of their supply lines over to educational supplies. Um, it, it might look, uh, silly on the budget transfer form in the sense of it's not a lump sum of a thousand dollars, but if you add the eight oh eight, sixteen, and the two forty together, it's over, uh, a thousand dollars. So again, it's, it's moving it out of one bucket into their educational supplies, uh, for one of their classrooms. The next transfer that is in front of you is transferring two thousand dollars out of subscriptions and moving it into actually testing supplies. So if you folks remember, a few months back, we did a pretty big transfer where we moved a substantial amount of money out of testing supplies into subscriptions. I think some of the coding, from a budget standpoint, was incorrect. So we have realized that there is two thousand dollars worth of testing supplies that needs to be purchased. So we are transferring some money back from, uh, subscriptions into testing supplies. All right, the next, uh, transfer that is in front of you is a two thousand dollar transfer for the J R O T C funding, so we go ahead and supply them roughly two thousand dollars every year to be able to run that wonderful program, um, from a supply standpoint. So that is the transfer. The next one you have is from Nashua High School North. Uh, they are going ahead and moving some money out of postage, uh, excuse me, postage and books. They are moving, uh, four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty cents into their furnitures and fixtures line. They would like to purchase, uh, some student desks for some that are old, uh, damaged, or unsafe for these students. And that is it for the transfers in front of you.
Thank you for going out of the way.
You're welcome. All right, let's jump back to, uh, maybe everybody's favorite, or maybe it's just my favorite, 'cause I'm a numbers person.
Ms. Lamfier's favorite, actually.
So the monthly accruals expenditure report is the one that I'm gonna go through. It is the monthly report that has your July up at the top across through June. So just some high-level items to just note before we go ahead and get started. So we have finished February. If we look at a calendar, July through February, we've gone ahead from a fiscal year standpoint, we've completed eight months of the fiscal year, which would roughly say we've hopefully ideally spent sixty-six percent. And from a school year standpoint, running September to June, I would consider that a ten-month period of time. So it is six months. We've gone ahead and made it six months through this school year. We have four remaining. Again, roughly sixty percent is what should be spent in these categories. Um, so from an overall standpoint, we have gone ahead and used collectively, as a school district at this time, fifty-nine, just over fifty-nine percent of our overall budget, if you look at the bottom line. Now, friendly reminder, just remember, we do, uh, go ahead and do a whole bunch of accruals in June related to wages, um, for our teachers and our folks who don't work through the summer. And the month of February was only a two paycheck month. So that's why wages are slightly down compared to when you look at January. I'm gonna go ahead and move on unless there's questions. Uh, the fifty-twos, which is our fringe benefits, um, they look pretty standard at this point, roughly in total sixty-one percent. Uh, seems pretty reasonable, um, where we're six months through the school year. Educational assistance, I did have somebody just ask a question related to educational assistance, which is the fifty-two, eight-hundred line. That is a pot of money that we have an agreement with, um, the collective bargaining units and the N T U to go ahead and be able to do, uh, continuing education, pay for some of the college courses. So we do still have some money left there for the next couple of months for our employees to go ahead and get those, uh, reimbursements for their educa- educational assistance. Most of those folks are individuals who might be pursuing a master's degree. Okay, I'm gonna move down to the fifty-three lines, uh, so professional and technical, excuse me, technical services. If we stop at the first page and just look at that bottom-line item, this has been a topic we've been talking about quite a bit this year, contracted services. So fifty-three, six, twenty-eight. A friendly reminder again, contract services is, this is a roll-up of everything. This is a roll-up of all of special education, contract services, technology, plant operations, everything. That one's a little high, at seventy-eight percent already spent. Could be typical where we're midway through the school year. That is going to be, again, a continuing line that we will watch as we move forward in April, when we start to do that forecast. As of now, it looks like we're going to have enough money, um, but we'll know more once we start to forecast out. Okay? The other one that might seem a little high, the line rate above that, are fifty-three, six, one, four, pupil support services. We've already spent almost ninety-six percent in that line. Remember, these are services for our special education students related to occupational therapy, P T O T services. So again, I'll watch that as we move forward to go ahead and do our. So again, I'll watch that as we move forward to go ahead and do our reconciliation and our forecasting in the months ahead. All right, moving on to 54s, which is our property, excuse me, property services. Collectively, as a whole, we've spent about 60% of that overall budget. Seems reasonable. You know, we had a few months of the heating really ramp up. It was a little bit of a colder winter this year, I believe, than last year. But we are still on track at this point. And it looks like we are going to have enough, potentially, in that, in those categories as we get into April. We will know more as well. All right, 55, other services. So within this bucket, there's a few items we've been kind of watching, I'll say, or we've been discussing through this year. So regular transportation services, special education services, we spent between the two about 60 to 66%. Again, seems reasonable. We've gone ahead and spent roughly just over that 60%. Again, six months through school. So I am feeling comfortable there. As we are all aware, unfortunately, next year, we are seeing an increase in, in transportation. But we are doing some due diligence for the fiscal year '26 budget to kind of work through if there's any options. Let's see, the next kind of hot topic I feel like we've been talking quite a bit about this year is your 55-694 tuition out of district. So this is our special education tuition out of district population. We did go ahead and budget around $6 million this year. Right now, we've used 67% of this overall budget. I did meet with the special education department today. We are going to be fairly close, if not slightly over, that $6 million. You know, as I've mentioned in several meetings in the past, that line item really ebbs and flows. We tomorrow could have a few students move in or a few students move out. So it definitely is something that we unfortunately cannot control, but we are doing lots of forecasting on it. I will keep you posted if I think it's going to go drastically over as we do the forecast next month. From a supplies and materials standpoint, overall, from a bucket, we've spent about 65%. I would expect that to be right about there, if not slightly higher. Again, we're six months through the school year, we're eight months through the fiscal year. We really should be purchasing, if we haven't already, the office supplies, the educational supplies, any testing materials. This is where all our copy stuff comes out of, our paper, our supplies, subscriptions, et cetera.
I would guess that a chunk of these are front-loaded.
Absolutely.
So it's okay that we're beyond 60%. You're comfortable with that because some of these things we don't have to worry about.
Yeah.
Obviously, paper and stuff, but.
Yeah, I'd be honest, if some of this was sitting at like 30%, I would say, are we truly using these funds for this fiscal year? That answer really should be yes. So the way we're spending as a district looks correct. The 50, excuse me, the 68, the other expenses, we've touched upon this quite a bit. That is a revenue account, which is why you see that in the negative. That is for the percentage that we get each month every time we go ahead and draw down the federal grants. Equipment within 71, slightly over, slightly higher, excuse me, than that 60%. Again, though, it should be front-loaded where computer software, you would expect that to be purchased the beginning of the school year, beginning of the fiscal year. From a computer software standpoint, we haven't really spent a ton in January and February. Because again, we need these softwares in order to move forward through the fiscal, excuse me, through the fiscal year. Let's see. All right, getting close to the end. So the next one is your 52, excuse me, your 75s. Geez, long day. Debt services. So this is just principal and interest. We've gone ahead and paid the principal and interest payment at this point, not anticipating additional costs coming through unless something changes. But that's why that one's 100%. And then budget adjustments. That budget adjustment in the 90s won't go ahead and happen until we do a journal entry in June, when we're closing out our fiscal books. Friendly reminder there, that is, any facility rentals, we do a transfer in for the money that we receive throughout the year for facility rentals. And then, as you heard, I believe it was on Tuesday of the last week, from the athletics team, there is a portion that we go ahead and charge our students played, for playing sports, we'll do a transfer as well. And that's where you'll see that budget adjustment come June.
Questions? I, looking at my binder here, it looks like we're supposed, I was supposed to request a vote for the transfer report. It says, but want, just to be safe, you want to do it?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
You okay with doing that out of the way? So I have a recommendation to approve the FY '25 February transfer report. All those in favor say aye?
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, second the motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The ayes have it. I say aye as well, three nothing. And I'm sorry, I missed that. Mr. Gray, anything? I'm sorry, Ms. Daniels-Williams?
I just wanted, you know, the, the big numbers that you, could you explain it to the public? I think that we've already talked it over. But like, in the salaries and wages, the reductions and attribution, which is the 51-800, that's a negative. It started as a negative and ended as a negative. And then, well, I guess.
So I just want to clarify. So are you asking me to explain the 51-800, which is the, the reductions and attritions number?
Yes, please.
Okay. So the reductions and attritions number is $450,000. That is a line item in the budget that is put in as, there's parentheses around it. So that goes ahead and says it's a negative. What that is, and we do it every single year, is if a teacher leaves midway through the year, and they are a top step teacher, and we hire somebody at step one, there is a difference in cost there, right? So that is to offset some of those costs that we end up seeing year over year as a district. In addition, same thing on the administration side. We went ahead and, as folks are aware, we lost our transportation director this year. We did repurpose that position as a transportation coordinator. There is a difference in salary between those two folks. With that being said, you will see that, those numbers offset within wages. So you will never see something charged to that 51-800 line. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
And like I said, just for informational, it's the same with the 56, 53-600, which are instructional services. Under professional and technical services.
I think I'm confused on what you're asking. I apologize. So the 53-600 instructional services, that has nothing to do with wages.
No, no, no. So no, because it's in a whole different category, because it's in the 53, not in the 51. What I meant is like, so it started out at 330, and then now it's still at like 301, 303.78.
So the way the report is in front of us is it has each month of what the expenses were. And then over to the fourth column from the right-hand side is your year-to-date actuals. So for that particular line, we've gone ahead and spent $28,696. And the next column to the right is the encumbrance line. So if there was a purchase order in the system for something that we were gonna go ahead and either purchase or have professional development, and this is for all categories, you would see that in the committed line. That line item is zero. And then the 301,304, that is in that next column, is what is our year-to-date available. So that is money that is still available within instructional services that we are able to go ahead and spend between now and the end of June. Thank you.
Ms. Lanvier, your microphone is on. Do you have a question?
I'm not quite feeling myself tonight, so I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna say no questions. I'll catch up to you next month.
I hope you get your voice back. I have.
Why am I so?
Feel better, please.
I'm wearing a mask. I'm so selfish and callous. Anything else, Mr. Gray?
I think that is it. We will see folks next week on Monday to talk more from a broader Board of Education. I know we've been doing a lot of work in district office, just looking at some additional costs. But if there's something more that folks have based off of questions related to the budget and some scenario planning for next fiscal year, please continue to reach out to Jen Bishop and Dr. Andrade with those questions. And we'll bring more information on the 31st.
Okay, and I want to thank Ms. Lanvier for giving me plenty of time to prepare, asking me to fill in. And obviously, I didn't prepare, which is no fault of your own. I'd be looking for a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I, I, I'm sorry. I can, I guess, and we are, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
The vote is three nothing. We are adjourned at 5:54 PM. Thank you, good night.